We're ready to start, just want to inform our viewers that councillor Dron is phoning in and councillor McKinnon is out of province, so he will not be here. We acknowledge and appreciate the land on which we gather is the traditional onceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation. Call to order, any declarations of conflict of interest? Okay? Number three, approval of agenda. I need someone to move, councillor Bernard, councillor Beck. All those in favor? Councillor Dron?
In favor.
You have two sets of minutes, regular monthly meeting January 14th, 2025, special meeting January 28th, 2025. Adoption of minutes, moved by councillor Ramsay, seconded by councillor Matar. All in favor?
In favor.
Business arising out of the minutes. Okay, see you none. So the first report is the report from Planning, Heritage and Development, deputy mayor Alana Yankoff. Councillor Twill, just one second, deputy, councillor Twill.
During the meeting that I phoned in and I was cut off, I just wanted to make sure that I was, I was here, I attended the meeting. And I guess with technical difficulties, I'm not sure, but I want to record that I was, you know, I tried everything, I even tried to get a hold of Cape Kennedy, couldn't get online.
So councillor Twill, at Tracy Mclane, she did put that in the minutes?
Okay, great.
And that happens sometimes, I don't know what it is, if the person's mic is mute, but I called out a few times and
Okay, great.
We just didn't hear you.
I just don't want to be marked abs.
So we recognize that you were present.
Yeah.
Okay, deputy mayor, Alana Yankoff, planning and heritage, development too, why not?
Thank you, your worship. Good evening, everyone. The planning and heritage, the heritage board has not met since the last council meeting. The design review board met yesterday. The affordable housing advisory committee met on January 21st. The minutes are in your package. The planning heritage committee met on February the 5th. Copies of the minutes are also in your package. And the planning board met on Wednesday, February the 5th. And again, the minutes are in your package. And I just wanted to just remind everyone that as long as the weather cooperates, Thursday evening is the public meeting at the Rod Hotel, Rod Charlottetown, just across here, at 5:00 PM. So that's the public meeting. If the weather ends up being poor, then we'll be letting everyone know the, a new date for that. Tomorrow evening at 4:30, here is the planning board meeting and we will be reviewing the Park Street application and hearing staff's recommendation for planning board. And then that file will come back to council the end of March for their deliberation at that point. And other than that, we have two resolutions for your consideration. And if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer. Thank you. Oh, and also, the permits year-to-date are in the package as well, that you can see that as well in there. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy. Any questions about the report? Okay, can we just go on to the first resolution? And that's deputy, page 31, in our digital copy? Yes, it is. Thank you. Right there.
Planning and heritage resolution number one, your worship, is moved by deputy mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by councillor Julie McCabe. Be resolved that council accepts the bid from Esri Canada to implement planning and permitting GIS-centric technology in the planning and heritage department in the amount of 533,010 plus applicable taxes, and that the city enrolls in the Esri Advantage Program in the amount of 70,000 plus applicable taxes to support our agreed Housing Accelerator Fund e-permitting initiative, and further that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
And the backgrounder is there, forward. Just before we, deputy mayor, I want to thank you for this. How long have we been dealing with this? It's three to four years, a lot of talk, and now we're actually seeing it going forward as a useful tool in planning, so thank you kindly. Councillor Twill?
Thank you for bringing this resolution motion forward. What I'd like to know is, what is the impact and effect that it has on the new official plan and the zoning development bylaw? What significant role or how does this, how does this interact with that process? Like, is this strictly technology or, or I'm just trying to get a better understanding? Thank you.
Deputy mayor?
Thank you, councillor Twill, for your question. It will, it really, it really is just going to streamline the process for folks that are applying for any type of a permit. So, you know, how it would pertain to the official plan of the zoning and development bylaw would be with any zoning and development bylaw or official plan. This is really just the e-permitting process that will streamline the process and hopefully get permits received and out the door for folks that are requiring permits. That's what it's all about. Yep. It's a modernized tech process. Yep.
Very administrative, correct?
Hmm.
Very, very much for administration of permits.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, councillor Twill, second question?
So, again, it's to expedite the process, it's to put timelines and timeframes so developers can have an expectation as to when they can, you know, when they go through the process, when they can receive their permit and get on with business, whether it's a foundation permit or, you know, whether it's a single-family home or multi-purpose residential complex. This should help expedite that.
I will also note that it will also streamline for information purposes when somebody, an applicant, is trying to see how far along they're in the process. They'll be able to, you know, go on to the system and trace it in real time. Yep.
Questions gone. Thank you, councillor Ramsay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Councillor Dron?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bernard, did you do one? Thank you.
That's fine.
Second one is on page 60, 63. Thank you.
Planning and heritage resolution number two, your worship, is moved by deputy mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by councillor Julie McCabe. Be resolved that the following major variance for the subject property addressed as 72 Queen Elizabeth Drive, PID number 350355 be approved. Number one, to allow for an appointment-based home occupation to accommodate massage therapy business and request that council establishes, number two, the approved number of clients permitted to visit per day and a maximum number of business-based visits per week. And number three, the required onsite parking for the proposed home occupation.
Deputy mayor?
Is anybody as curious about number two and number three as we all were at the planning board meeting? This is an interesting part of our zoning and development bylaw that doesn't often come into play very often, and that is that council needs to decide this evening the maximum amount of permitted visits that this home occupation can take should you decide to approve this resolution, as well as the amount of parking spots. And in discussing this with staff, I'd like to just put forward, you know, after talking with the applicant and what their needs are, that we would look to ask for two parking spots, which are, they do have room in their driveway for that, as well as we look at five clients a day, that they would be permitted. That's what we, seven days a week. Yep. So, but that's, that's not my decision, that's just a recommendation. It's really, it's council's decision on what you want to add into this resolution. Yep. So I'll leave it at that and open it up for questions and comments.
Councillor Twill?
Thank you. So this resolution requires a major variance. And with a major variance, does that mean residents in the affected neighborhood within 100 meters? Maybe you could help me in terms of the process and the public consultation that was executed to arrive at this point?
Yes, councillor Twill, so folks within the 100 meter were notified and we got no responses back from anybody, which then, so there was, there was no public meeting, it was, just came to the planning board. And so staff's recommendation was to approve it based on the criterias that were met, and that's why we're here today. So, yes, so residents were notified within 100 meters. Okay?
Councillor Beck? Press your button. Well, press the right one. Speak. That's it. That's the one.
Welcome to the club, man.
It's a 50/50, buddy. 50/50.
You're more than a pretty face, aren't you? Huh? Jeez. Look at that. Huh? Just a question, deputy. I guess the, I know that the applicant had expressed her own way of controlling the business, like she said, I can only do so many, I think she said, max five a day, sort of thing. So I think five is a good number. And I think probably we should put maximum visits per week in there, specify what that is, because I don't know if we have that. I doubt if she would be looking to go seven days a week. I think she's probably looking based on the figure that, or what we received at the meeting. So maybe we put in five days, maximum five days per, five visits per day, five days per week. Would just be a recommendation. The other thing is, I'm wondering is, can you speak again, I can't recall, the transferability of, if we approve this for this particular business, if she sells a home or moves or whatever, does the business exemption or does he, does this still transfer to the new owners or would a new application have to be signed? I can't remember what the process is and that, if you could speak to that for a minute.
Deputy?
Yep, so thank you, councillor Beck. So if she sold the property, the approval to operate a massage therapy business in that, in that PID number transfers with it, but only that type of business? And of course, then that person then still has to go and register their business, but that's, that's a whole other issue. But yes, so that will go, as long as they, as long as they are using it, if they, if they're lapsed within six months, then it would revert back and it would have to start over again, but yes, it can transfer to an owner.
Just as a massage.
Just as a massage, just as a massage, yep.
And deputy, just to clarify, it says in number two, and a maximum number of business-based visits per week. I would take that as a business, business week is five days, correct? So it's already implied? Okay. Any other questions? No? Good. Do you want to go? Deputy, go ahead.
So do we need to put a friendly amendment into this to include that?
No.
Or do we just have to verbally say that that's the, that's the hours that they can, they can have five, five per day?
I thought you were looking at days, councillor Beck. So business-based visits per week, business week, a business week is Monday to Friday.
It says per day and per week.
Yeah, no, I know, I know.
Five per day, plus five days, twenty-five a week.
Business, business-based visits per week, but business week is Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. That's a business week.
Five times five equals twenty-five, maximum.
You're all right? Okay.
And I'm just wondering, in terms of like process, do we need to add anything to this resolution when we pass it? Is it now just on public record that that's what it is? Does, do we need a development agreement to go with it? Like, how does that work? Maybe I'll ask Mike, how does that work? What's the next step?
Through the chair, I would suggest that we probably want to amend the resolution to reflect that, given that the zoning and development bylaw provides direction that council needs to set these parameters.
So is that to add a development agreement?
I think a resolution should be sufficient in this case.
Okay, so we just have to add then into this resolution that, and request that council establish, so now it should probably read, the council has established the parking, the parking and the amount of business that can be done. Is that, do we have to reword that?
No.
Someone gonna, gonna reword this for me? Can you help a girl out here? Like, this is a very bizarre thing we're doing today. So, like, who's gonna add this in there? Who's writing this in there for us so we can pass this?
Do you want to take a crack at Sue or? Can I just get his, go ahead, Mike?
So I would just suggest that council approve five clients permitted to visit per day and a maximum of twenty-five business-based visits per week, and that two required onsite parking are set for the proposed home occupation.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Well, it's a friendly amendment, so you're moving it?
Yeah.
Seconded by councillor Beck, or, okay, we get friendly amendments. All in favor? Good. Councillor Dron?
In favor.
Do you want to speak there?
I guess I might.
Go ahead, go ahead.
My question would be, if the letters were out and everybody was happy with it, then why are we talking whether they can do it for the weekend or not? There was no responses back.
No.
So what's it matter if they do it Monday to Friday or seven days a week? Why do we have to change it? Did anybody complain?
It's in our zoning and development bylaw. Gotta get an amendment.
You want to go ahead? Deputy?
It's just an area of the zoning and development bylaw that doesn't often come this way, and it's council's role in this situation to put these parameters in, and after discussing it with the applicant, this is what they want it, so we're just putting in what they want it.
Want it Monday to Friday?
Yep, five, and, yep, five a day, Monday to Friday, and, and the two parking spots. Yep.
Also, the council that represents the area is asking for it, that's why you second the friendly amendment, correct? Correct. Okay. Okay, so we have the main resolution on the floor. All in favor? Okay. Councillor Dron, yea, nay?
In favor.
Thank you. That's it? Okay, we can move on to 6.2. Protective and emergency services, councillor Julie McCabe. The two chiefs are here, Brad McCarroll and Tim Mayby.
Thank you, your worship. The Protective and Emergency Services Committee met on the 21st of January. We have two first readings tonight. One is to amend the City of Charlottetown policing service bylaw. The second is to amend the City of Charlottetown Dangerous, Hazardous and Unsightly Premises bylaw. We don't have any other resolutions for consideration tonight. Any questions, we'll do our best to answer.
Councillor Twill?
Just, just looking to get updated when the new police vehicles are going to be on the road. I understand that they're being stored at the Public Works Garage and wondering what the holdup is. I mean, we did put a rush on purchasing the vehicles and, and then we passed a resolution for the light fixtures and all those other amenities that were required for the, for the new vehicles. So I'm just, maybe, maybe the chief can answer that through the chair, but I'd like to get an update as to where we're at with the new vehicles.
Okay, councillor Twill, and what we'll do is we'll get back to you with that information. It's not in our past minutes to discuss tonight, and it's not on the agenda for that, but unless there's a real quick answer, I think we can take it back and come back to an answer.
Your worship, chair, I can answer that very quickly. The vehicles were shipped to Nova Scotia on January 17th and are currently being outfitted over there.
Okay. So we have no resolutions, but we have a first reading to amend. Oh, councillor Beck. Go ahead, councillor Beck.
So if I understand this process correctly, what we'll do here tonight is we will go through it if there's no recommendations for, discussion for change or anything like that.
That's right, it's the first reading, it's the only discussion.
Okay. And then if it goes through tonight, then we'll go to the official adoption at second reading the next time around.
Correct. With no discussion.
Okay, so this Dangerous and Unsightly Premises is one.
Can we read it first? You have to read it first.
Okay.
Okay, just first reading, so CAO reads it, so it puts it on the floor and allows to be open game.
Your worship, amend the City of Charlottetown's Dangerous, Hazardous and Unsightly Premises bylaw to permit the bylaw enforcement officer, inspector, to immediately enter a property without the need of a resolution of council to carry out work required. To bring the property into compliance, reference legislation pertaining to the Municipal Government Act of Prince of Rhode Island, reflect the recommended amendments cited in the Enforcement Amendment Bylaw, number 2024 EA 01, to include reference to the city's enforcement and summary proceedings bylaw, number 2024 ESP 01. Correct formatting, typographical errors, and ensure overall consistency throughout the bylaw. Resolve that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown Dangerous, Hazardous and Unsightly Premises bylaw be read a first time, moved by councillor Julie McCabe, seconded by councillor Kevin Ramsay.
Motion. The first reading's on the floor now, councillor Twill.
Okay, so, because I understand with this new bylaw, and this is something we've been waiting for, for an extended period of time, the power and authority will now rest with the bylaw enforcement officer, so it really takes city council out of the equation in terms of dealing with, dealing with, you know, some of the responsibilities and assignments that are included, all the parameters that are included in the bylaw. So this should be able to expedite the process in terms of, it's not? Is that not what we're doing here tonight?
It's not a new bylaw.
We're not doing that here tonight? Okay.
Councillor, just to clarify, you had mentioned at the front of your comments that this is a new bylaw. This is our current bylaw that we're doing an amendment on.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate the clarification. Thank you, CAO, Sue. So, so this now, again, just to reiterate, will put the power and authority in the hands of the bylaw enforcement officer, council no longer be involved in the process, and be able to expedite the process, working with property owners and doing his due diligence like he always does. I think he's a great judge of character. He's probably one of our best employees, and I think in this regard, he'll be able to execute that bylaw in a very professional manner like he always does. And this should send a powerful signal out to all the neighborhoods and communities that we won't have to wait a month or a month and a half and go through, you know, posting, signage on properties. We won't have to wait two weeks and four weeks and, you know, in some cases, you know, grass is not cut all summer long, vehicles are being stored. A lot of, a lot of things are happening on, on respective properties that need to be dealt with in a, in a, in a very, you know, turnaround time. So I'm very pleased that this is finally coming forward. It's something that we've been wanting for, I don't know how many years now, and I think it's fantastic, and it sends a great message out to the community, and I would urge the chair to, to engage with communications, to send out a press release to all the residents of this city so they can understand the timelines and timeframes and how this amendment should be able to deal with matters in a very expeditious way, and I think it's fantastic. Thank you.
Councillor McCabe, did you wish to answer that or did he answer his question?
No, I think, I think all of us have been really wanting to allow the bylaw officer to be able to go without having to come through committee and get to council, so it is a really positive thing. It allows them to do the job they want to, and I do agree, and we've talked about making sure, once the comms person's kind of taken on for, for this, taken, sorry, for this committee, that, that we'll make sure we get some good information out around that. Thank you.
And it's both Todd, constable Todd and constable Elizabeth that would be using this, correct? Yeah?
Yeah.
Councillor Beck?
Okay. So I understand, if I understand it, we're, one part of this, I watched the committee meeting, one part of this is making sure that our police services bylaw is in alignment with the MGA, correct?
That's the other one that we're doing next.
That's next. So we're dealing, so we're dealing with just the onsite, okay, I got them in different order here. Okay. All right. So with regards to, I don't know if I feel like, this is one of the 10 bylaws that we prioritized to be updated. My understanding, what we were going to do with these bylaws, is we were going to have the opportunity to see what the recommendation, recommended changes were, have some time to go through what they actually mean. I feel personally that this is a little short notice in terms of the amount of time that we've been given to actually go through, getting the package, getting the recommended changes, and I would like to have more time to actually look at them, and I would do the same with all the other ones. The procurement bylaw that we're going to be updating, the, the patios, the procedural bylaw, or code of conduct bylaw, and, because, I mean, what we're getting in here is a red line here, red line there, delete this, delete that, and I'm not actually sure if I fully understand what the nature of all these changes are, and so I wouldn't mind having a little bit more time to fully absorb that, and we could look at it. I would put on a motion of deferral for, we could bring it back at the next meeting, even a couple of weeks would be fine, and that way you could a little bit more fully understand the, the whole process.
Okay, so he's moving to defer. Do I have a seconder? Okay, we have no seconders, so, yes, you can, just, can I just get you here, Julie? No, she has to, she's just responded?
You know, and I, and I appreciate that, what you're saying, councillor Beck, and I think when we look, this, this amendment really only pertains And I think when we look, this amendment really only pertains to that time process for our bylaw officers in help reducing them having to come through committee to come to council. I think our bylaws should always be working and looking at updating continuously. I know that there's been comment from our staff and our policy person that this is just one part, and I mean, if there's new things that have to be updated, they should be looked at regularly anyway. That's part of our job as counselors, is to be looking at the governance. But for this particular one, it is to allow those bylaw officers to do their job, which is, we have been pushing for many years to get this to the table now. So that's why I wouldn't want to do a referral.
Counselor Twill, and then Counselor Bernard.
Yeah, I too share with the frustration of the residents that says, you know, this process takes much too long. This has been going on for some time, and this has been one of the top priorities for city council for a number of years. And I have faith in this amendment, I have faith in our personnel, very professional. We've got to send a positive message out to the community that council's listened. We've taken the steps necessary to expedite the process. The residents don't want to wait any longer, they want action. And Counselor Beck, if there's any further amendments that need to be made, any bylaw for intents and purposes is a work in progress. So we can always add, we can always delete, we can make additions. You know, it's always fluid. So I appreciate what you're saying, I really do. But we've got to send a message out to the community that we mean business, and let's let our professionals do their job, take us out of the equation.
Counselor Terry Bernard from Moore Ten.
Thank you, your worship. My only question is, with this change, and I, like everybody else, like to see it sapped up, and it looks like it's going to be, but my question is, since it's not going to council to pass a resolution anymore, have we checked with legal to see if the, whatever work needs to be done on the property, that it usually goes to be a lien on that property, that taxpayers aren't paying for it? Has that been looked into? Make sure that's looked after?
You can refer to anyone, Counselor McCabe, but do you want to? So, Chief, do we turn that over to our policy guru, Melanie Bailey? Melanie, can you speak to it?
Yes, thank you, your worship. The lien question was noted. We are still investigating, we're meeting next week to work on processes and to begin preparing a response back regarding the lien process with legal.
No, I'm not sure. So if I heard you're right, so we don't have an answer for that yet?
Okay, let me, may I summarize, your worship?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So yes, today is around making the amendments that were already approved through council, providing authority to the city, everything that Counselor Twill summarized, with exception of problematic properties or properties that require demolition, they'll still come back to council for a final approval. In regards to the lien process, that is the only approved approach currently. We're looking to see if there's any additional provisions with the MGA that would allow alternate routes, for example, through property tax.
Summarize, we can put a lien in the property, correct?
Yes.
Go ahead. Yes.
Yeah, that's how I'm looking for it, yes or no? When we go in and do the work on property, do we, does the lien still go on the property? Or is that not answered yet? We don't know.
They're looking at other avenues, right, Melanie?
Well, if we don't have that clarified, then we should hold off, passionless.
Go ahead. Melanie?
Through finance, following a bill unpaid upon a period of time, a lien is placed on the property, at which time, when a house closes, the lien is collected on.
Okay, so it stays the same as it is now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, no, I know, Counselor Beck, I got you right here, old buddy. Go ahead there, Counselor Beck.
Thank you.
It's hot light.
Yeah, I got it.
Hot mic.
Hot mic, it's hot. Just to clarify, I'm not looking, I think I've been pretty clear here, that I've been trying to expedite this, and I've been very clear on that over the last little while. So it's not about getting action. I want action. I want this done, I want this tended to. So I do want to clarify that. And I'm all for expediting the process. Part of my question here, and part of what I've struggled with, is the whole eighteen-month process. And I don't know if I see, if I fully understand if that has been addressed under this update of the bylaw. I see mention in here that it says delete for more than eighteen months, and then it says it shall be referred to council with the recommendation, and council may order it be repaired or demolished. I still don't fully understand what the new process will look like once we update this bylaw. And in talking about coming back and updating bylaws all the time, I think we should try and update them in a comprehensive manner while we're at it at this first time, as opposed to coming back and forth and saying, yeah, let's just update this and update that. And I guess that's where, if we're going down this road with the other ten bylaws that we have prioritized, if we're going to be seeking council's input, meaningful input, we have to have time to understand what we're actually commenting on, and what we're actually looking at, and what that means down the road. Because what we get into in different situations is, oh gee, I didn't know the bylaw meant that, or gee, I wish the bylaw had said this. Well, this is now our opportunity to get the bylaws right. And I feel that we're going through, and I know I'm not going to get support for my deferral, but we have nine other bylaws that we're going to be updating. And if we're going to be going through this, and we're the ones that are going to be ultimately approving them, we better know what we're approving, and we better understand what that means going down the road, because we have to adhere to our rules and regulations that we have outlined in our bylaws. If we don't understand what we're approving, be careful what you wish for, because you may find, we may end up complicating things once again down the road. So part of this is I'm still unclear, which is part of the reason for my request for the deferral in the first place, is I don't understand the eighteen-month process and how, I've had the meetings with the chief, and I understand what took place with regards to our recent situations. But what does it mean going forward? And if someone could give me an explanation here today, that might help in terms of whether I would be willing to support the bylaw as is or not. Thank you.
Counselor McCabe?
And I can understand, because I'm trying to compare it to what's in place already with what you're saying, because when I read that, I understand that myself interpreted that where we were talking about basic stuff, grass cutting, removal of garbage, that would be where.
I'm all for that.
Right, and that's how I interpreted the amendments, that we're only doing that right now. There's still work to be done on the demolishing of buildings. That's not what, I understand that the amendments on this is. For me, the amendments that I'm voting on tonight is that we don't have to come to council to say twelve Avonlea Drive is unsightly, and that the grass has to be cut, and you have to clean up the garbage. That's the only amendment that I've interpreted in this bylaw. So if that's not correct, I will support a deferral.
That's my understanding, but do you want to defer? Do you want to defer to the policy guru, Melanie Bailey? Melanie? Ben?
Your worship, and yes, thank you for the question. Section five point nine.
That's part of her document, correct?
Yeah, it is correct.
So that's page five point nine?
Section point nine.
It's not here.
Here we go, five point nine of the unsightly bylaw.
Yeah, no, we don't have it there. We have section five, subsection five point one, subsection five point two, and then it goes to six point one, section six, subsection six point two.
In this section, there was an error, eighteen months was repeated twice. In this current bylaw, it's written that after a building or property has become problematic and is secured, it has to sit for eighteen months and then be referred to council. The requirement is following all work being done by staff. If a property remains problematic or requires demolition, it shall be immediately referred to council for discussion, not waiting eighteen months, at which point council can decide if they want to wait eighteen months. But this will expedite the process as was recommended by council.
Okay. Good, good. And I think it was said many times, this is a work in document, so, you know, you can never write a perfect law, so just keep that in mind as lawmakers. It never can. Question called? Question's called by Counselor Ramsey? Well, I have to call for the, okay. No, no. So, okay. All those in favor, signify by aye? No, it's already, okay. Counselor Dron, yea or nay?
In favor?
Just read it again.
No, I'm not opposed. There's some misunderstanding, confusion over here about the motion, my deferral motion. I didn't have a second.
You didn't have a second, so we moved on.
So I just wanted to get that clarified, because there's some misunderstanding over here on this side of the room.
The reason I didn't call it, because nobody seconded. Okay. Do you want to read it again there? CAO?
Resolve that the bylaw now be approved as a city bylaw, and that it be entitled the City of Charlottetown Dangerous, Hazardous, and Unsightly Premises bylaw, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council.
Shall it carry? Counselor Dron?
Yes, Carrie, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, do we have the second, no, first reading to amend the Police and Services bylaw?
Amend the City of Charlottetown's Policing Services bylaw to reference legislation pertaining to the Municipal Government Act of Prince Edward Island, assigned bylaw number two oh two five PS oh one, reflect recommended amendments cited in the Enforcement Amendment bylaw, two oh two four EA oh one, to include reference to the city's enforcement and summary proceedings bylaw, number two oh two four ESP oh one. Update bylaw template and incorporate minor, incorporate, my apologies, minor housekeeping amendments to ensure overall consistency throughout the bylaw. Resolve that the bylaw to amend City of Charlottetown Policing Services bylaw be read a first time, moved by Counselor Julie McCabe, seconded by Counselor Kevin Ramsey.
Okay, it's on the floor? Good. Shall it pass? Counselor Dron, yea or nay?
Yea.
Okay. Just read it again there, please.
Resolve that the bylaw now be approved as a city bylaw, and that it be entitled the City of Charlottetown Policing Services bylaw, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, moved by Counselor Julie McCabe, seconded by Counselor Kevin Ramsey.
Shall it pass? Counselor Dron? Counselor Dron, yea?
Pass, sorry, can't get the button hit.
Okay. We're having troubles, we're having those same troubles. Okay, that's it? That's it? You have another question? You've already asked two questions. Sorry, we have to move on, sir. You've already asked two questions? Yeah, oh, you asked two. Parks and Recreation, and that's yours. You got up to speak.
We report as in your package, we have two resolutions coming forward tonight for council's consideration. I'd like to just bring up a couple of, some highlights. We had the official opening of the new Simmons Arena, which was a great, great historic event for our city. People attended, were very pleased with the ceremonies. More importantly, they're very pleased with the facility. We have a wonderful facility. I've said it before, I'm going to say it again, it's a new frontier when it comes to parks and recreation, and built in a community where it's very accessible for all participants. I can tell you that it's in a great location in terms of walkability. And one of the greatest features of this new facility is our walking track. This walking track is come on like a hurricane. People are really enjoying the walking track. And the most significant point that I'd like to bring up is that the walking track is being utilized by all demographics, particularly our senior citizens. They've really gravitated towards the walking track. And I think that's probably one of the best things, one of the best features of this new facility. The reviews are just incredible, and it's a real testimony to the planning and the work and the due diligence that went into this facility. As you know, we had the passing of our former deputy mayor, Stu McFagin. We have a room dedicated for Stu McFagin. I think later on, I think it'd be appropriate that we have a ceremony with Stu McFagin's family there to have an official opening for the Stu McFagin boardroom, Mr. Quinn. So please make note of that. I think that'd be, I think that'd be, you know, well received by the McFagin family when the time is right. I do want to bring up an issue. I received a phone call from a resident that stands at the Confederation Center, and they're able to take out skates, no charge. But one of the difficulties that the participants, when they're borrowing skates, is, you know, the skates aren't being sharpened. So I wanted to bring that up here tonight to ask our manager if we could place that on the agenda, maybe we could partner with Confederation Center in sharpening the skates. You know, I think the Confederation Center's doing an admirable job in having skates there to loan out to our residents. And, you know, if we can help out by sharpening the skates, and maybe we can talk to our good friend here, Mr. Ramsey, maybe he can help out as well. But I'd like to put that on our agenda, to see what we can do to help out with residents that are borrowing skates, and maybe we can help with the cost of having the skate sharpened. Just wanted to bring to your attention, we're receiving emails and quite a request from the privateers football team, that's looking at the City of Charlottetown, the construction of possibly two multi-purpose sports fields at Simmons. And I'm sure council's going to be hearing more feedback from the football community that are very keen, they're very determined, they're very dedicated, and there's a lot of excitement, and they're certainly looking forward to having a venue, an artificial turf venue, so that would extend into the fall, if you have to practice past five o'clock. They're very limited in the timeframes when it comes to that hour of the night, and extending the season, whether it be in the fall or in the spring. So looking forward to further discussions when we get to the capital projects. Now, another matter that has come up, we've all attended public meetings, and I don't want to get into Alana's responsibility with what she's going to be dealing with tomorrow. I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor. But, you know, from a Parks and Recreation perspective, council, we've got to take a serious look at the Joe Gis Park in terms of security, we've got to take a look at the Joe Gis Park in terms of consistency and predictability. Our residents have spoken loud and clear, this is nothing new, we tried to deal with it several months ago at one of our Parks and Recreation meetings. I think now's the time for the City of Charlottetown, and in particular, our Parks and Recreation Department and the Standing Committee to come up with a plan of action. I want the residents in this part of the city to be able to feel safe and to be able to use the Joe Gis Park. That's not happening right now, and we've got to take the necessary steps, okay? We've got to take the necessary steps. This is very unfortunate, what's happening, I know, and I don't want to get into the outreach center, but I know what it's like, because I was dealing with the same issues up in all of our park and the sports fields, same thing, same rerun. So, Mr. Quinn, I wanted to bring that forward too, in front of all members of council, and I know council retired, you're very keen on this as well. I think you're doing a great job there, representing your constituents, and I know this is near and dear to your heart as well. So, and it's named after a former premier. So we've got to do our job and make sure that this park is safe seven days a week, and the trail as well. So I will do my best, Mr. Mayor, to answer any questions. I have our manager here, Frank Quinn, he can certainly answer the questions, probably a lot better than I can, and we do have two resolutions for council's consideration. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, Counsel Twill, I do want to thank the staff, especially Frank and Mike, for setting up the official opening of the Simmons Arena. And I know two members of the Simmons family were there, Jack Simmons and actually one of the granddaughters of the Simmons that owned and operated Simmons Pop, or Soda Pop. So, thanks, Frank, thanks a lot for the great kickoff for the... for this facility that is a new landmark in the City of Charlottetown. And, you know, I did, Counsel Twill, I did forget that, and I think it might be just appropriate right now to take a moment of silence for Stu McFagin. If you don't mind, if we could all just rise for a moment of silence in memory of Stu... I never... again, my apologies. Thank you. Thank you, that Counsel Twill.
Okay, so, do you want to go to the resolutions?
Okay.
Your worship, Parks, Recreation, Leisure Activities Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Mitchell Twill, seconded by Counselor Justin Matarde. Resolved that council approves the City's Environment and Sustainability Department to proceed with the installation of an electric vehicle charger in Victoria Park and that council grant permission for a fee to be charged for the usage of this electric vehicle charger as required by Section 6.15 of the Victoria Park Promenade Bylaw, and further that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. All those in favor? Counselor Dran, yea or nay?
In favor.
Thank you. Next one, CAO?
Parks, Recreation, Leisure Activities Resolution Number Two, your worship, moved by Counselor Mitchell Twill, seconded by Counselor Terry Bernard. That is per the recent request for proposals, RFP, for 2024, 2025, Parks Playground Equipment. The City of Charlottetown accepts the following bids for playground equipment from Fundy Fencing Limited, Blue Imp, in the amount of $41,499.42, which includes stringers plus applicable taxes... Sorry, your worship, my eyes are running. For a medium-sized play structure for Stockman Park, Play Power Canada in the amount of $42,458 plus applicable taxes for a medium playground structure for Meadow Park, Play Power Canada in the amount of $41,883 plus applicable taxes for a medium playground structure for Montgomery Heights Park, Play Power Canada in the amount of $9,192 plus applicable taxes for two eight-foot two-bay swing sets, and further that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counsel Twill, I think we did ask the question at the meeting. These products with Frank here are all Canadian-made? Do you... I think you answered... Do you want to answer?
Your worship, so, one of the companies, the Fundy Fence, they are a Canadian company, and their products are Canadian-made. Having said that, there could be components that could be manufactured in elsewhere and come, you know, to Canada. Play Power Canada, they're a local distributor. Right now, their company, or they're based in Canada, but they're part of a bigger company, which is part of the U.S., and their play structures are manufactured in the U.S.
And Counsel Twill, the only reason I mention this, because of the pending Canada-US trade war that we have to buy by Canadians. So, wherever possible, I know that you will use that lens and all of us will use that lens, so I just wanted to ask that. Thank you. Question, Counsel Ramsey?
Yes, question called.
Okay, all those in favor? Counsel Dran, yea or nay?
In favor.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counsel Twill.
Something I neglected to mention regarding the official ceremonies, we had the dropping of the puck. So, we had the federal member of parliament, Sean Casey, we had two cabinet ministers, Ernie... Ernie Hudson. The Honorable Ernie Hudson was there to participate as well. The mayor was there and I was there to participate in the dropping of the puck. We had a full turnout of council. And Counsel Ramsey and I were talking afterwards during the reception, and he made it quite clear, he says, you know, all members of council was responsible for this new facility. And you know what, Counsel Ramsey, you were right. So, what I'd like to do the next time we have a chance to have a celebration at the new Simmons, I'd like to have all members of city council there for the dropping of the puck. So, whenever that's possible, I'd like to have the ten members of city council and the mayor participate in the dropping of the puck. I think, again, I referred back, this was a historic occasion, and all members of council were responsible, and you were quite right, Counsel Ramsey. So, I should have thought of that, to be honest with you, but I didn't. So, whenever we have that opportunity, Frank, I'd like to have all members of city council participate in the dropping of the puck. All members of council should be there at center ice. Thank you.
Counsel Twill, you couldn't have said it better because, you know what? The next official opening will be the new Simmons Pool. So, we'll all go there with our bathing suits and dive in the pool at the same time. A great idea, and I'm going to be there. I will be there. Counsel Bernard?
That's a scary thought, isn't it?
That is scary.
Anyway...
I still have my Speedo.
Yeah, yeah, right. Get that thought out. I just wanted to comment too on the new facility and just some information a lot of people may not know, may have forgotten. But whenever the design was being made for this rink, I'm not sure if everybody knows, but it was designed to be able to handle two ice plants. So, another ice surface can be built right onwards, so that's why you'll see when you come in on the left-hand side, that's where the elevator is, the warm room, the dressing rooms. So, another facility, whether it's an ice rink or whether it's a curling rink, can be plugged right into that. The plant's already there, the warm room, the elevator, so on. So, not sure if a lot of people are aware of that, but just thought I'd put that out there, your worship.
Good point. Okay. Counsel Dran, you ready to do your report or did you hand it over to someone?
No, it's fine. I can do it.
Okay, sir.
Well, thank you very much. The Water and Sewer Utility Committee did not meet in the month of January, so I have no resolutions. We do meet on Thursday, so we're looking for a fairly good agenda. And if anybody has any questions regarding the Water and Sewer Department, I'll try to ask, answer them as best I can. Thank you.
I know you can't see the light there, Counsel Dran, but Counsel Twill, do you want to ask your question, Counsel Twill?
Thank you, Counsel Dran, for your presentation. As you know, I've been on the trail with respect to the contract with the fiber optic company. I know you're not directly involved. I mean, it is senior staff that is involved with this file, working with our city solicitors like Cox and Palmer. What I'd like to know, and maybe it's unfair to ask you the question because you're not involved with the day-to-day operations, but could someone please give me a timeframe when this contract is going to finally be signed? And if there's challenges or struggles or roadblocks or impediments, please tell me what they are. I just want to know. Thank you.
Counsel Dran, I know you've always practiced in answering this question. You have an answer, response? Do you wish to defer to the chief engineer or director of...
No, no, I can try to answer as best I can.
Good, sir.
I know every month Counsel Twill asks me and every month at our meetings that, you know, you're there as well, that we ask for an update. We ask for... to, you know, ask our staff to push this ahead, and we're always told they're working on it, it's in the contractor's hands, he's got to come back, and then it goes into legal's hands. I ran out of excuses. I've certainly asked our manager and the director to get this done as quickly as we can, but it seems every month it's... there seems to be a new problem. So, here we are a couple of days before our meeting on Thursday, and I'm sure the manager can try to get something for us on Thursday. And soon as I find that out, I'll email all of council where we're at with an update. That's as good as it gets this month. Hopefully, I'm not back here next month saying the same thing, but again, we keep pushing, we keep asking, the committee keeps, you know, trying to get the management team and everybody on the same page, but it's a hard thing to get everybody together. So, it's not an excuse, it's just, you know, what I have right now, and I hope to have something more fulfilling on Thursday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Dran. And, yeah, we'll move on. Environment and sustainability. Did you want to ask a question about the... about this?
No, I'm doing it.
Okay, so, Counsel Beck is speaking for Counsel McKinnon because Counsel McKinnon is not available and out of the province. Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. So, just the... I want to, before getting into the motions, there are a couple of motions here for you tonight and an anticipated motion as well. So, I just want to go over a few highlights before we begin. The total number of transit rides in January was 126,837, and this is 17,581 more rides than the month prior and a 1.7% increase from January 2024. The Charlottetown Food Council is looking for new members, and this council works to improve local food production, distribution, access, and sustainability. And people from all areas of the food system are welcome to apply, including farmers, nutritionists, food retailers, nonprofit leaders, chefs, and certainly those who have lived with the experience of food insecurity. And applications are being accepted until February 18th, and if you would like to learn more, you can apply at www charlottetown.ca/foodcouncil. Another point, the City's Flood Protection Rebate Program is open once again for applications, and Charlottetown residents are eligible for rebate covering 75% of the cost to install sump pumps, backup battery systems, alarms, and backwater valves, up to $1,000. And residents with a household income below $55,000 are eligible for rebate covering 100% of the cost, up to $1,500. And finally, the creation of the City's Ten Year Active Transportation Plan is well underway, and analysis of the current state of AT infrastructure is in progress. The first meetings of the Technical and Public Advisory Committees are taking place, and a page on charlottetown.hall.ca shares project information and how engagement will take place over the coming months. So, with that, if there are any... we'll go to the motion and if there are any other questions about anything, you can... I'll do my best to answer them.
Counsel McKinnon?
Thank you, your worship. I'm actually just going to jump ahead a little bit from my committee meeting, and the reason being is because we have the staff here for transit. So, on Sunday evening, the mayor and the Strategic Priorities Communication Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee was invited to come out to UPEI Student Union to do... to speak to them on a couple of topics. And one of the topics, there were three topics, one being transit, housing, and second being housing, the third was the use of the facility of the Bella Line Center. So, it was a pretty informal, open discussion that the mayor and I attended, and obviously one of the highlights of that was transit. So, there was a lot of discussion, a lot of questions that came to the mayor and myself around that, so we did our best to address that. But I think there's a really good opportunity here for you to reach out to them if they ever... if they haven't already reached out to you, because we certainly advise them to reach out to Anna and yourself to address some of them questions. But, you know, it was interesting to hear their perspective from a transit perspective with the students and the union and, you know, the main university corridor. But, you know, they do share a lot of similar concerns with students, you know, having to move out to a broader region and some of the challenges they're facing with transit. So, before you left, I wanted to... because I was going to mention it at the end, but you wouldn't have got to hear that. So, I think, if, your worship, do you want to add anything to that based on that transit discussion?
Counsel McKinnon, I think it was great. We were invited for half an hour, for 30 minutes. I think we stayed there for about 60 minutes. You just kept talking, but that was...
Yeah, of course I did.
That was what we had to wait for. But they did mention very clearly that they are renegotiating their contract because each student, 5,500 students, pay $70 each for the whole year to ride the bus. It's part of their tuition. So, there are $380,000 invested in this transit. So, they are a partner. So, I really appreciate that we were there and it was a great meeting, and we plan to go back on dealing with the housing issue, but thank you.
So, you may hear from them directly, or if not, the mayor has contact information from the president, the vice president, and certainly reach out and make connections. So, I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McKinnon.
Environment and Sustainability Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Norman Beck, seconded by Counselor Mitchell Twill. Resolved that council direct staff to proceed with scope changes to ICIP funding agreements to move from Transit Depot construction and full-size electric bus purchases to diesel-fuel expansion, electric minibus purchase and installation of a charging station, and that council direct staff to pursue capital plans that align with the outcomes of ICIP project change request approvals, and further that mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counsel Beck, you have a question? Okay, go ahead.
Just prior to any discussion on this, I wanted to provide a bit of context, just a few points before we go any further. So, just as background here, council has previously passed two resolutions towards transit electrification, and one was for the electric bus purchases with Nova Bus, and one was for the depot design build with Wellington Construction. And those projects were paused to allow for further review of the long-term financial impacts. So, the resolution provided with the committee report tonight outlines staff's recommendation on the path forward, which is to change the scope of the ISIP funding agreement in transit electrification project. So, tonight, we're going to direct staff, whether we want to keep with the original plan as passed or passed the new resolution as presented tonight, to support adjustment to the scope of these projects. So, a vote in favor of tonight's resolution would direct staff to adjust ISIP funding to see a focus on fleet expansion and delay larger electrification plans. That's basically what it's coming down to. And a vote against tonight's resolution would see staff stick with the original depot build and electric bus plans. So, as outlined in the resolution, this is based on federal government endorsement of scope changes as well. So, I just wanted to provide that context and before carrying on.
Thank you. Counsel Bernard, do you have a question, comment?
I think at one time, when we were heading down this road towards electrification, which we still hope to, when we got our approval for ISIP funding, my understanding at the time was that the federal government were in for 40% cost share, the provincial government was in for 30% cost share, and we were in for the 27% cost share. That was approved, I think it was two years ago now. So, the cost of a bus, for example, electric bus, it used to be 1.1, 1.2 million, is now 1.8 million. So, the costs have gone up. Right now, we're 40% of the cost share of the total product. So, we're equal now to the federal government, and we haven't dug a hole yet, we haven't started anything. So, chances are this cost overrun, so we're going to be at 50%, which is why the pause is put on. It doesn't look like the city can afford this unless there's another ISIP fund atop it. Because right now, for the fund that we applied for, that ends, I believe, in... or has ended 2024... in, or has ended, 2024, there's no more money towards this here electrification for us or the buses. So once it was approved, it was talked about, any cost overruns, the municipality has got to cover. So the buses at one time, at that time, were 1.2, now they're 1.8. So there's a lot of cost increases that have not been covered. So it's probably wise to pause, see where we are, take a sober second thought. So for me, I'm going to be in favor of this resolution.
Thank you, Worship. And I guess to the vice chair, or through the vice chair. So I guess when I, when I come on council here, one of the things that came to light was, you know, a real strong movement towards electrification of buses. So when I was reading through the package and, you know, trying to make the decision as to what direction to go here, really, my question then becomes if we're, if we're looking to probably, I guess, shift gears here, and pardon the pun, but if we are looking to do that, are we putting ourselves further behind with going back to the, like, in bringing diesel buses in versus going ahead with the electrification of the buses? And, you know, I'm trying to be supportive of the reform, but sometimes it feels like it's one step forward, two steps back. So I'm not quite sure where we're going. So to the chair or vice chair, if I can maybe have one of the managers address that.
Want to take it on?
I'll get, I'll, I'll.
Go ahead.
I'll try and answer that. I think page 150, kind of, when you look at the options that are available there with the cost breakdowns and the CO2 emissions and all sorts of things, kind of breaks it down, really, that when you look at it through the route expansion and through the newer diesel buses that will be used, which are better, if you will, in terms of their fuel efficiency. So there is a, when you look at kind of the net tons per year, just on the green side of things, I think there's not a really negligible difference between the two options. Cost factor is certainly quite a bit different when you look at the 32.8 million in capital contributions versus 8.7 million on the capital contribution sides too. So I think there are some, there's certainly merit in terms of the option that's being presented here tonight. And I think we were all, I think everyone was looking, we all wanted to get to electrification when we ventured down this road a while ago. I think there's just been some obstacles that are now facing us that were not facing us back in the day. And I guess furthermore, to add to that, it's not the end of the electrification, it's a pause on electrification. And so I think that's where we are. When you look at it in the grand scheme of things, I'm certainly supportive of it. And I think there's, I think it's, it was, it was prudent work on the, on the part of staff to take a second look and to come up with the options that we have in front of us here tonight. So I'm comfortable with it. Jessica or Anna, if I've missed anything, feel free to chime in.
Thank you. Through your chair, I'll just add, that was a great answer, and I'll just add a couple of points to it. So we will still work towards electrification, but instead of buying full-size electric buses, we would buy minibus to start and outdoor chargers. So we will be testing out the technology and easing things in. And the second piece to that is that this is the direction that our transit operator prefers us to go as well.
Councilor Twill.
No, I second the resolution. I agree with the mover of the resolution. I certainly appreciate the second sober thought from our senior administration. It wasn't easy for senior administration to come back after resolution was passed a month before. As a new member of the committee, I did challenge the logic with respect to the location for the new depot. It's a tight squeeze. I think we need to be looking, you know, 25, 35 years down the road with the anticipated expansion to our fleet depot. So this gives, gives staff and my cassy time to work collectively to talk into all these, all these, you know, important challenges that need to be addressed. It is a pause, and I think it's a good pause. And I believe that, you know, it gives us even more opportunity to plan. And when I say plan, again, I'm talking 25, 35 years down the road. So I, I hope council will support this resolution. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Twill. I've stated my opinions on it, and I know the CAO knows that. And we've been working on this for six years. First time I came in as a council, that was one of the goals, that fight to, well, I should say fight, but I mean, that path to net zero, the race to net zero, took us some time to get to where we were. And then we're putting a pause. So a pause will cost money, because we've seen positive in the past has caused money. So question being called?
Question's called.
Question's called. Okay, all those in favor? Councilor Dron?
In favor.
Nine zero. Okay, next report. There's one resolution, correct? Or two?
Just one.
Nope, environment, one resolution.
No.
No. Now, that's under another, that's under the, yeah. Okay, Public Works, Councilor Kevin Ramsey.
Thank you, Your Worship, members of council. The Public Works met January 22nd. The minutes are included in your package. The Civic Board for Persons with Disabilities met the 17th of December and January 21st, and those minutes are also in your package. We have four resolutions for your, for your thoughts, Your Worship. And any questions? We're certainly here to help. Thank you.
Councilor Twill.
Sorry to disappoint you, Council Ramsey.
It's okay, buddy.
Sorry. I do want to take this opportunity to thank the Public Works snow clearing crew, everything from sidewalk plow operators to snow plow operators. You know, we've gotten a lot of snow here in a short period of time, unexpected in some cases. And I think our work crews have done a pretty good job. So I want to acknowledge and recognize, you know, the great job that our Public Works crew has done here, particularly over the last number of weeks. Again, snowfalls that we didn't expect, and they've done a great job. I just, just a suggestion, or just trying to get a status on the machine for the hot mix to fit in, fill in the potholes. This is pothole season. We have a lot of potholes in University Avenue, for example, Queen Street as well. And I just wonder if that, if that machine is operational, you know, where it's at. We got some big holes there, and even on Kenshin Road as well. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, Chair Ramsey, and see if we can, what we can do to fill up these potholes. Thank you.
Twill, and I like to say too, how the Public Works is working very well. By removing the snow, we're getting a lot of good compliments. With the potholes, every day, we're all getting phone calls. And we're making phone calls, like, to our staff at the Public Works, and they're doing the best they can do. At that time, like, I know there's a few, like, you almost lose your vehicle in, either in your ward and my ward, and so things like that. So as soon as we get them, I talk to the supervisor or the acting manager, and they get a hold of the supervisors. So they're up there as soon as possible, trying to fill those holes.
But the machine itself?
The machine acting manager, is that in operation?
Your worship, councilors, wasn't prepared for the question. I'm not sure if the machine itself, the hot mix machine, is out and ready. But I know they do have patch materials and have been utilizing them as necessary.
Okay, thank you. First resolution?
Four.
Yep, first four.
First resolution, Your Worship, from Public Works, moved by Councilor Kevin Ramsey, seconded by Councilor Bob Dron, resolved that as per the conditions of the public request for quotes for the 2025 half-ton crew cab work truck four by four, low submission from Fairoff Ford and the amount of 55,600 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. All those in favor? Councilor Dron, yea or nay? In favor?
Resolution Number Two, Your Worship, from Public Works, moved by Councilor Kevin Ramsey, seconded by Councilor Bob Dron, resolved that as per the conditions of the public request for quotes for a 72-inch commercial-grade forefront mount lawnmower, the low submission from good equipment, and the amount of 36,000 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. All those in favor? Councilor Dron?
In favor.
Resolution Number Three, moved by Councilor Kevin Ramsey, seconded by Councilor Bob Dron, resolved that as per the conditions of the public request for quotes for a 48-inch Cyclone boom mower for Skidsteer, the only submission from Atlantic Coastal Equipment, and the amount of 46,900 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. All those in favor? Councilor Dron?
In favor.
Resolution Number Four, Your Worship, moved by Councilor Kevin Ramsey, seconded by Councilor Bob Dron, that as per the conditions of the public request for proposals for two 60CA dump bodies and one eight-foot slide and dump box, the submission of action car and truck accessories through the canoe procurement program, and the amount of 51,293.79 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Council, Council Ramsey, just a quick question on that. So going forward, maybe yourself or the interim manager, Public Works manager, so we're going through canoe as a platform for this with a new procurement bylaw, this should continue to operate with going through canoe? Is that, is that correct? Can I find out? Is that, Council Murphy?
Paul, could you answer that?
Or could you get us an answer, Paul, maybe down the road?
Or we have a meeting in two weeks. We can bring it up, Your Worship.
Good.
Is that okay with you?
Under advisement.
Okay, thank you. Under advisement.
Question? Questions called. All those in favor? Councilor Dron?
In favor.
Okay. Councilor Ramsey, and I just want to go to Finance Audit, Tendering, and Administration. Councilor John McAlaire.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. The Finance Audit and Tendering Committee met February 11th, 2025. The, or I'm sorry, excuse me, no, met February 5th, 6th, 2025, and the draft minutes are included in your package. There's one resolution for your consideration. And by the way, just, just want to apologize, there's, a meeting request went out from me. I hit some wrong buttons. I come in early to the council meeting tonight to talk to Rory, the tech guy. I sent out, anyway, I think you've all got meeting requests for me. So I just, I know we're coming down to crunch time here with budget. So the two that should be on your radar as it relates to budget process should be February 19th at noon time for a review of the draft capital budget. So that's February 19th at 12:00 noon. And then February 20th, February 20th, you should have 5 o'clock special meeting for the draft capital budget. Thank you. So back to, back to the main report, there's one resolution for your, for your consideration. And do my best to answer any questions. Lane Pino, finance managers here, if, if there's anything that I can't speak to. Thank you.
Council Twill.
Thank you for your report, Councilor McAlaire. As you can recall, last year, I'd like the Finance Committee to look at the possibilities of looking at property, freezing the property assessments, and maybe joint venture with the province of Prince Edward Island. You know, the cost of living, inflation, interest rates, mortgage payments, tank oil. I mean, it's just astronomical. And I think our residents would certainly welcome the opportunity if, you know, if we could examine that possibility and maybe encourage the provincial government to come on board to freeze the property assessments. I'd like to take a serious look at that. I think it's something that would, would be met with great approval from our constituents. The timing couldn't be more right than it is right now. And I would certainly like to participate in that process. I think our residents would, would look very favorable at having this, because, again, I'll reiterate, the cost of living today, you know, even to purchase a brand-new home, prices are not what it was even two or three years ago. Cost of building materials, cost of living, just to operate a home, it's a tough time. And again, the timing couldn't be right. Thank you.
Thank you for your, for your comments, Councilor Twill. I'll certainly do, do my best. We'll take that, take that back to committee for, for further consideration and, and discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Resolution there, CAO. Sue Fraser?
Finance Audit, Tendering, and Administration Resolution, Your Worship, moved by Councilor John McAlaire, seconded by Councilor Terry Bernard, resolve that council approves the following budget transfers as per the attached documentation. Public Works Department, transfer of 938,000 within the Public Works capital budget, transfer of 1,330, oh, sorry, 1,335,000 within the Public Works capital budget, transfer of 2,555,000 within the Public Works capital budget, transfer of 765,000 within the Public Works capital budget, water and sewer utility, transfer of 851,089.56 within the water and sewer utility capital budget, transfer of 140,000 within the water and sewer utility operating budget, transfer of 95,000 within the water and sewer utility operating budget, Parks and Recreation Department, transfer of 17,500 within the Parks and Recreation operating budget, and transfer of 131,562.74 within the Parks and Recreation capital budget. These transfers represent no overall increase to the fiscal year 2024, 25, operating and capital budgets.
Council Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship. And I do agree with the transfers. It's no overall increase to the budget that was approved. I'm just, where I'm curious is, I'm just wondering, when I see like 1.6 million, and it's for St. Peter's Road, Belvedere, and it says not budgeted, or there's a number of projects here, Pond Street rehabilitation expenses not budgeted. I'm just wondering, how could it not be budgeted, yet we went ahead and did the work? Was this a, was this a project that started a year before, there was no carryover, and there was no money put in the budget to finish that project? And I know Paul, I know Paul is acting, Paul, I know you may not have an answer. I can, I can get one after, but I just, as a member of Finance, I probably should ask the Finance Committee. But like I say, I'm okay with the transfers, and we have to do them. I'm just wondering, when I see that expenses not budgeted, expenses not budgeted, I'm just wondering, is that a project that we started, and it was no carryover? Or how do we go ahead and do a project when it wasn't budgeted?
Just, Councilor McAlaire, do you want to defer it?
Thank you, Councilor Bernard, for your question. And I will defer that to Paul.
Thank you.
Your Worship, councilors, you, yes, to Councilor Bernard's question, you'll notice a number in the Public Works section, just all I can speak to, where we're saying they're not, excuse me, not budgeted. You may recognize that all of those are projects that were prior to this fiscal year. I am still trying to find out some of the background, wondering if some of it is that the accrual process had a hiccup in it, and funds that we were expecting final payments, holdback releases, items like that, that were expected to be accrued, maybe not have been accrued, or whether they were expecting that the budget would roll over when it doesn't, or what happened there. But you are correct, they are funds that were necessary to finish projects from prior years, the expenses were made, and then we recognized that the accounts they were coded to appropriately do not have funding for this current fiscal year.
And my last question, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I noticed that there was some bills coming through that were three to four years old, and they were fairly significant in the $200,000, $300,000 range, is that normal for projects, the bills come in, or some bills came in two years later, three years later?
Your worship, councillors, there are some, you know, sometimes there are multi-year projects where you have not issued substantial completion, and you've got significant funds on a larger project that are mechanics liens, holdbacks and warranties that do not get paid out for a couple of years, you know, depending on when the work was completed.
So Paul, for example, like it had Harley Street at $150,800, or Garfield Street at $370,000, or St. Peter's, Belvedere, $331,000. Is that normal to be coming in this late hour, projects done?
Sometimes, like I say, I haven't had the opportunity yet to get a deep dive into these various projects. The St. Peter's Road, I think that was just finished in the last fiscal, so some of those final progress estimates and holdback releases may well have not come in, and some of these costs may have been incurred in April, May and June of this year, sort of thing. The invoicing coming in, not necessarily the work. And yes, there are some contractors that we know they must have a big bankroll, and we have to chase a little bit to get final estimates in, or the work between city inspectors and the contractor inspectors to finalize unit quantities, that sort of thing. There is times that invoicing is delayed.
Yeah, I'm just going by the one on page 213, where it has like St. Peter's Road, Belvedere Avenue, and it has the amounts, and it says completed prior years 21 and 22 fiscals. So that was why I asked those questions, to assess something that would come in two and three years later.
Yeah, I think we discussed this at Finance and Administration, and I know that the issue was raised, Lane was there, that substantial completion, I know from our own background, is sometimes it could be a year to 18 months, because, and then with the province, they not only have substantial completion, they also have a one-year warranty before they pay out. Yeah, there's, they're delayed payouts, but I think we stayed within the budget that we were in.
Yeah, and I guess for me, your worship, it just comes back to how important it is to have the carryovers, the projects that have been approved, and have that money carried over. Anyway, thank you, thank you, Paul, thank you, Mr. Chair McLeire.
Okay. Question?
Question's called.
Question's called. All those in favor? Councillor Duron?
In favor?
John, councillor McLeire, I just wanted to thank you for your budget, but councillor McLeire, now that we're going into capital budget mode, I think the next couple of weeks, we have to work with the provinces and the federal government to ensure that there's 25% USA tariff on Canadian goods, we have to come back with our leverage in Public Works, Parks and Recreation, Water and Wastewater, because capital budget is big-ticket items that we can leverage to buy Canada first, and I always say, councillor Bernard, we need to stand as one, because what unites us is greater than what divides us. Thank you.
No, I agree, I think Canadians are united across the country, and the importance of the attack on our economy and with the tariffs, so we will be united as the rest of the country is, your worship. Worship Economic Tourism and Culture Development Committee met on January 16th, the Arts Advisory Board met on January 29th, and as you know, minutes from both meetings have been included in your package, there is no resolution, your worship, for consideration for this evening. Some highlights and some information, now, your worship. The annual Jack Frost Winter Fest kicks off Friday evening and runs through till Monday. First held 20 years ago, this anchor winter tourism product brings families from across the maritime region to PEI to celebrate the best of Canadian winter, contributing over 500 rum nights, excuse me, and substantial economic impact to the destination during the slowest period of the tourism season, your worship. So, and your worship, we talked about the amount of events that were going on last month, and it continues on, we still have the ACAA volleyball championships, the PEI Beer Festival, and the cheerleading competitions, these are all happening between February 21 and February 23rd, and then PEI Music Week hosted in March 4th to the 8th. So from January on, it's been a tournament or an event going on every weekend so far, so. As part of the city's review of the public art policy, staff held a five-day interactive exhibit at an open house at the Guild to gather public feedback on public art. Attendees shared their vision and ideas, explored the city's new public art map, and identified new locations for future installations. The event was a success, drawing close to 100 participants. The feedback will help shape the updated public art policy to reflect the community's goals and aspirations. Additional opportunities, your worship, for public input will be announced in the coming months, so that will help us to work on our public art policy. Your worship, I know Mr. Long, oh, Mr. Long is here tonight, okay, well, anyway, he doesn't know I'm going to announce this, but anyway, I think it's something we should be proud of. Sport tourism candidate proudly announces the finalist for the 2025 Prestige Awards, which recognize exceptional sport tourism initiatives, multi-sport games and events. The Prestige Award also shines a spotlight on the people and places behind these initiatives. Multi-sport games and events that make the Canadian sport tourism industry so dynamic and diverse. Once again this year, our nominations represent the strong and the vibrant sport tourism industry in Canada. The caliber of this year's nominees reflects the capability and expertise we have right across the country. So, your worship, in the category of sport tourism industry champion, one of the three finalists is our own Mr. Wayne Long from the City of Charlton. So, and the winner of that will be announced, your worship, March 20th, but I think it's pretty, pretty good company to be in, your worship, from across this nation of ours. The other ones that are in it is the City of Grand Prairie and Events East Group, so congratulations, Wayne. Your worship, if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
So will that honor be taking place in Ottawa, or do we know? Will you be on the road again, councillor Bernard? Will you be on the road again to go with?
I don't know if I'm wise enough, but it's March 20th in Calgary, so we'll see.
Any questions? Councillor Twill? Ward four.
It's not so much a question, but at our next Economic Development, Tourism and Events Committee meeting, I think we should take a serious look at maybe bringing forward a notice motion regarding interprovincial trade. We hear about the 25% that the President of the United States is talking about, trying to leverage and trying to penalize all of Canada, and one of the issues that keeps coming to the forefront is free trade with our sister provinces, whether it be Nova Scotia, New Brunswick, Newfoundland, or as far away as Alberta, British Columbia. And I know there's discussions taking place at the federal and provincial level, but I believe we as a municipality should be playing a role here in the capital city. I think we should be reaching out to the Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Business Association, business leaders that conduct and do commerce and trade here in the City of Charlton, and Chair, if it's okay with you, we can put that on our agenda for our next meeting, and let's do our part as a capital city, because we're an economic engine here in the capital city. We, you know, we're the biggest players when it comes to the economy, I would suggest. Tourism, seat of government here is here, and we're always looking, prospecting for new opportunities, could be bioscience, could be, you know, just smaller businesses. We need to be in on the ground floor promoting free trade with the provinces here in Canada as well. We need to lead by example. Thank you.
Councillor Bernard?
Yeah, that's the interprovincial trade barriers, I think is what we're talking about, and that's what the provincial governments to deal with, and apparently they're talking about that now to ease those interprovincial trade barriers, so that's our provincial government's responsibility to do that. I don't think we need any encouragement, I think they're working on that now.
Yes.
But what I will say, your worship, is I did, Charlton, as you know, is a partner with Quebec and the Heritage Partnership, so I was in Quebec representing Charlton, and I did have the opportunity to meet with the organizer of the Quebec Winter Carnival, as well as the Stampede, but more interestingly, the Quebec Winter Carnival, and get some ideas of things that we may be able to use for our Jack Frost concert, Jack Frost event moving forward. So he was very open to those conversations, and he has a lot of experience. So as we know, the Quebec Winter Carnival is a very, very popular and successful event, as is the Jack Frost, but I think we're always looking to improve with Jack Frost, and I think there's, so we did talk about meeting again and going over some possibilities, so it was a great meeting. Thank you.
Quebec Carnival goes back to 1894. Bonhomme goes back 50 years. Yeah. Bonhomme de Carnaval. Oui, oui, monsieur. Yeah, well, you know, just one, councillor McLeire has a question. Councillor McLeire?
Oh, it's just a comment, you know, for the city, you just recognized, I guess, it was a big, big weekend for hockey, right, in Charlton, a couple of Islanders games, I guess the rink was near full, apparently UPI, it was a UPI game as well this weekend.
Long night weekend, John, we didn't see that.
Sweetheart Tournament, you know, I was out Saturday night at the Redwater, and I just asked them, you know, what's your occupancy like, and they were, I think they were certainly 90% full, so it's cold February in downtown Charlton, so I'll come, thank you.
Just remember, John, buy local, support local, love local. Okay. Human Resources. Councillor Jarrett? He forgot. I took reports.
All right, the Human Resources Committee met on February 4th, 2025, and package, minutes are in your package, have no resolutions. Any questions? I'll do my best to answer them.
Councillor Twill?
Thank you, councillor Beck. I wanted to bring to your attention that when people are looking for employment with the City of Charlton, they fill out their applications, and most cases, they don't receive even confirmation of acknowledgement of the application. And I know there's a lot of applications come into the city, some of these people, you know, most people want to have the opportunity to work with the city, so I want to examine is the possibility that when applications come in or potential candidate that's looking to work with the city, there's an opportunity to talk to someone in the Human Resource Department, to see what department they'd be the best fit for. I have recommended that in the past, and it has materialized, so I'm hoping that we can be proactive and to work with candidates that do fill out applications. You know, we do it in the high-level jobs here in City Hall, I mean, there's headhunters and there's, you know, people where applications are looked at, they're vetted, and then bring forward a list of candidates like we're going to be doing with our new CAO, but, you know, a lot of people are looking for guidance, looking for help, assistance, and it'd be nice if they could talk to someone in the Human Resource Department to maybe even talk to, say, it could be Public Works, it could be Parks and Recreation, it could be Water and Sewer, any of the services that we provide here. There's a huge gap there, and I'd like to fill that void in. Thank you.
Councillor Beck?
Yeah, thank you for that, councillor Twill. I'll follow up with, I'll take that under advisement, and I'll follow up with HR and see what options are available. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Beck. Strategic Priorities Communications Intergovernmental Cooperation. Councillor Justin Matarck, Ward two.
Thank you, your worship. The Strategic Priorities and Communications in Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee met on Thursday, January 30th. The minutes of that meeting are in your package, and we do have two resolutions for your consideration this evening. Thank you.
Councillor Twill?
Thank you, councillor Matarck. As you recall, last month, I did make a request, I'm sure your staff are looking into it, but I would like a chronological, chronological itinerary or report with the provincial government, CAO, the mayor, current CAO, I'd like to be updated in some of the discussions that are taking place with the other levels of government. I think all council would be, it'd be very prudent and advantageous for us to have that information. You know, if we're going to be informed as to what's taking place with those discussions, whether it be the province or the feds, we can't, we can't be informed and make informed decisions, we can't even ask informed questions. So I did bring that up at our last meeting, please look at that and make that a top priority on your committee's agenda, to bring that information forward, because any discussions that do take place, or any decisions that are taking place, you know, I can think of a number of examples, you know, the, again, we're getting down to Park Street, but, you know, the task force, never did get a report from the task force, never did get a report for what's happening down there with respect to policing, with respect to fire, you know, the province, you often hear the province will say publicly, well, we're working with the City of Charlton. Well, what does that exactly mean? Who are they working with? Is it the planning department? Is it police? Is it senior administration? You know, we need to have a better snapshot as to what's taking place, you know, with the other levels of government, and I'd like that information from a chronological perspective. Thank you.
Thank you for that, councillor Twill, and you are correct, you did request that, and I did send that request in to seek that information, so I'll follow up with Dan Jenkins on more information on that particular one, so you were copied in on that email, so we'll forward that, but I also like to look at that in the perspective of, I suspect there are many discussions that are happening at various levels of different departments, not just necessarily at this level of this committee, and maybe one of the things that we need to be doing for full transparency is having minutes taken from those meetings, and those meeting minutes are made available to members of council through the committee, and of course, there obviously are meetings sometimes that are held in confidence and so on and so forth, we get that, but nonetheless, at some point in time, they may be able to become available for distribution, maybe within council. So I think there's a lot of work that probably needs to be done on that, and I'm sure there are discussions that happen either, whether it's with provincial government, federal government, or even other municipalities within Prince Edward Island that we may need to be privy to in helping us make decisions. So I don't disagree with what your request is, how we get that and pull that together, we may have to work towards a plan of action and how we come to that conclusion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Two resolutions?
Two resolutions.
Strategic Priorities Communications and Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee Resolution Number One, your worship, moved by councillor Justin Matarck, seconded by deputy mayor Lana Yankoff. Resolved that council approves the award of the Network Modernization RFQ to Brunette in the amount of $25,150.36, and that one additional op- and that one additional optional device be awarded in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents for a total of twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-three cents plus all applicable taxes and further that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Question, Councilor Ramsey? Question, question, question's called. All those in favor? Uh, Councilor Drong? Councilor Drong?
In favor.
Okay. Next one, please.
Strategic Priorities Communications and Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee Resolution Number Two, your worship, moved by Councilor Justin Matarck, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lani Yankoff. Resolve that council approves the award of the Vehicle Manager seven point one servers, R F Q, to Expertage InfoTech System Limited in the amount of seventy-two thousand and ninety dollars plus all applicable taxes and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Question's called. Question's called. All those in favor? Councilor Drong, yea or nay?
In favor.
Councilor Matarck, I, I can, I think I did mention this before, but the city of Charlestown and the city of Summerside have been trying to meet with the province regarding the revenue sharing because this is our budget time for operational and capital. So we're waiting for a response. Uh, we do have some areas that we want to, want to outline them, for example, police, public works, transit, E M O. So I just, again, I think I've already mentioned that to you, but go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. And I think that goes to Councilor Twill's point. There has been some communication and, um, I don't know if that's being distributed, that communicate, I know it was to me, but whether or not it's distributed to all of council. I know it's just a letter.
But we haven't met yet.
No, I know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Matarck. Notice of motion, I think this is from the deputy.
Yes, your worship, Deputy Mayor Lani Yankoff has a, a notice of motion that city council direct staff to review and bring forward an amendment to the short-term rental S T R licensing bylaw, number two oh two three P H S T R two thousand two remove, or two point, I guess that's two point oh oh oh, to remove the requirement for short-term rental operators to hold commercial general liability insurance. This amendment would reduce barriers in the licensing process by permitting the issuance of short-term rental licenses without requiring a commercial insurance policy.
So notice of motion, no discussion, correct? C A O? Okay. Thank you, Council, Deputy Mayor Yankoff for that. I know we've been asked it a few times. Okay. New business, no resolutions. Check that off. Uh, number seven, motion to move into a closed session as per section one nineteen one, subsection one of the Municipal Government Act of Prince Edward Island, uh, subsection one nineteen, section one nineteen, subsection one E, matters still under consideration on which the council has not yet publicly announced a decision, uh, and about which discussion in public would likely prejudice a municipality's ability to carry out its negotiations, community garden, land purchase. Councilor Beck, you put up your hand for, indicate something?
To move into a closed session.
Okay, so move by and seconded, thank you. All in favor? Councilor Drong?
In favor.
Okay. Thank you.